Directly, because we weren't able to do that before. That's why I think it's important because he was having issues, but now it just makes easier. He won't be able to vote, but. Okay. Before we get into our regular work session agenda, we're going to take a moment here to recognize and say thanks to a longstanding member of our community who has served this city for 11 years. And his capacity is planning and zoning, is later the planning and zoning, planning and zoning chair. He's in, he's a Navy veteran of the Vietnam War. And so, you know, this is, this is really not just about 11 years, but this, this is about a lifetime of service to his country and his community. And as he moves back east and hooks his wagons up and heads back east, we want to just say thanks to Ed Scorn for your service to the community. And I'm going to come down there and present you with this plaque here. So thanks for your service and safe travels and best wishes as you move closer to family and we really appreciate all you've done for us. So. All right, we'll move on items for discussion and consideration next. The first one's going to be Hennings Road Crosswalk at Barrett Haven Boulevard. Kathy, do you have any updates or any discussion on that?
I'm going to pass it off to Matt. He's got an update for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the, the crosswalk, the striping and the RRFBs will be included in the Hennings Road project. That is upcoming. It's currently in design and going through the environmental process right now with MoDOT. So that's a federally funded project and those improvements will be included in that project. The new crosswalk striping and the rapid flashing beacons.
And will those be beacons to go on when people are in the crosswalk? Are they going to flash all the time?
That when, when called upon by hitting a button. So just when people press the button, not all the time.
And just to be clear, because and it probably is the other ones are more antiquated, but the flashing beacons, that's the little orange light are the ones that go around the sign that are high vis.
I believe, I believe they will, they're just their own flashing orange light. I don't know if it goes around the sign or not. I'll, I'll have to double check on that.
Okay. Cause I, I know from experience on Barrett Haven Boulevard, nobody cares about those and they're going faster on Henning. Yeah. And I know that, you know, I welcome Alderman Johnson and Alderman Waters, you guys are both over in Ward three. I mean, my concern, and I think that the intention that Alderman Johnson brought up was probably the actual signs that have the, the lights around it. And potentially if it's maybe button pressed or activated, I'm not sure if that's in the scope of the project, but I think I've seen. And that's one of the reasons why actually on Barrett Haven Boulevard, we transitioned to stop signs with flashing lights because we have those. Yield in the crosswalk and press the flashing button, nobody stopped. And there was cross, there was crossing. So I just think it would be even a bigger issue on Henning.
Yeah.
Because it's a, the people drive faster, you know, so I would welcome comments from the other Ward three aldermen. Any thoughts they have on that?
Yeah, I would agree with Keith that more the better. I mean, especially with the speed. Oh, it's 35 and it's 35 there. And it is on a turn.
Yeah.
You know, and S turn and everything. And I think that's part of the problem. So whatever we can do to get enhanced.
Yeah.
Lights. I mean, that'd be great. And what is the, the, do we have a targeted timeline?
So it's, it's in, I would say, I don't have an exact timeline, but it is through preliminary design. So we are in the environmental and then we'll, uh, there's no right away to act, no right away acquisition. There's no utility to relocate. So construction, I would say next year.
Next year.
Next.
Is there any way to get this crosswalks done before then?
With federal funding, no. If, if we go off and break out and do it separately, we, it would just be the cost of the city.
What is the cost of all that?
The estimates are about 20,000 each.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll tell them to call you.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions or comments on the crosswalk at Barrett Haven Boulevard? Okay, unheard. Okay. Next up is architectural guidelines for residential and commercial properties suffering losses. Alderman Waters and Alderman Johnson, who are you?
As many of us know, the May 16th storms that came through here were preceded by other storms and will be having more storms in this area, but it has, um, it has caused a significant number of property owners to have to file claims with their respective insurance companies. And as we would expect, there is an amazing amount of discrepancy between the homeowners, the, the insurance companies, the timelines for getting things done. How to file, when to file, who to file with, what to expect. It just seems to be a lot of confusion on the part of, of at least the homeowners in our subdivision. This was somewhat prompted by an inquiry made through our, um, Facebook page asking about whether or not the city of Darting Prairie has a guideline for how insurance companies and homeowners have, um, how they would be able to do things. So what, what, what can you deny? What can you expect as far as replacement? And if you look at the, if you look at the indentures of the subdivision, it, it states within, in one section for our subdivision anyway, and I'm sure it's consistent with most of them that are in Darting Prairie. That a lot owners shall proceed promptly to repair or reconstruct the damaged structure in a manner consistent with the original construction. Now, there's a lot of room for interpretation there. Uh, consistent with, um, original construction would tell me that you would have to have matching siding. You would have to have a roof in full repair. You would have windows that aren't broken, you know, because those are all things that you would have had written in construction, correct? Unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be anything that the homeowners can point to as they're dealing with their insurance companies when they're making their claims. Because a lot of the insurance companies are saying, well, we will only replace this, the materials on one side of the house. But one side of the house doesn't match the other three sides of the house. Some insurance companies have offered to pay for half a roof. Some, some, so in other words, the, the point is the homeowner is standing there, there, if they look at this, it says consistent with original construction. They think they're insured. They think they're getting full replacement if they have replacement value for their prop, for their property on their policy. And I'm just wondering if there, I'm hoping that there would be something that the city of Darting can do to put in place some guidelines. Some measure of, uh, within an ordinance to help our citizens. If they need to point to something that would be consistent, not only for residential, but also for commercial under the circumstances of a partial loss. I mean, and I know there are guidelines that we use because we've adopted, you know, national codes for certain things. Jeff can, can allude to information about that, the details about that. But what I was trying to do was I was trying to be able to come up with an answer for the people in our subdivision who had questions about what, how they should be interacting with and or what their expectations should be when they're looking at this and they're talking to their insurance company and they're getting mixed messages. Again, also dependent upon the insurance company. So the only way to make it consistent between the insurance companies and the homeowners is in my estimation is to put something in place that says, here's the guideline for where we live. So therein lies the point that I was trying to make here.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing it up. And Alderman Johnson, do you have any additional thoughts or?
Yeah. That being said, there, there's many cities and I think we would have to refer to our legal counsel, but there's many cities with the same language out there and they call it match siding and match roofing and stuff like that. That I, I think we, we would be very helpful to our citizens to put that into an ordinance so that they are, the insurance companies are required to match the house siding and the roofing. So, um, I, I would say the pleasure of the board, if, if we can, uh, have legal counsel look into that language to, uh, to put something together for us to review, to review.
Yep. I, uh, so just a quick comment on my own. Like I've, I've been in another state, when I lived in another state, I had the same issue where we had a storm come through, knocked down a tree in the backyard, destroyed my fence. They wouldn't replace the whole fence. And then they said that the fence was useless. And then the insurance company also said, we're only going to replace half the roof. So I agree. I mean, it's just, you know, every insurance company handles things differently. And, um, in that case too, it's, you know, I, I got half of a roof. And if it was siding, it would have been mismatched, you know, discolored siding on one and new on the other. So I agree with it. And I think it's if, if, but for me, I know the state regulates, the state has kind of an insurance, uh, regulation commission, but I'll definitely, like you said, defer to legal counsel on this for the best approach and if we can impact it in a positive way, I certainly agree.
I have a question. Is that going to be compelling enough to, for insurance companies to abide by that? Because I've had a situation, it was actually my garage door. It was storm damage and they only wanted to replace one panel. And I eventually talked to him about it and, um, used some persuasive language and they decided to replace it all. But I'm just wondering if, are we spinning our wheels here? Or is this going to be something that residents can rely on? Because I think with so many natural disasters and so much stuff going on with insurance companies, the pushback is going to be pretty rigid, I imagine. So I just don't want, want us to waste our time if we're putting together a document that's not going to help anybody. But I'm all for it because I've been in a position before where I've had to deal with insurance companies not wanting to do the right thing.
Next time the insurance company, I put a claim and I'm going to call you to find out what persuasive language you use to get them to help.
Share your concerns, Alderman, um, because what I'm afraid of is that this will just bounce back onto the resident and not the insurance company. So in your case where the insurance company said, we're only going to replace one panel. If we have guidelines that say, oh no, they all have to be replaced, is the insurance company just going to still stand on, well, we're only going to replace one panel. So now we're going to have to enforce the resident replacing the other two. So I think that's one area we need to be careful about. In, in whatever we develop or, and I, I echo the, the comments earlier on what's our authority here to do this? And concern about being in the middle between third party dispute with, with one of our residents. I don't know, Brad, if you have any comments.
Yeah. So I, I'll kind of expand on that a little bit, right? So before the city can act in a, in a meaningful way, right? Whether that's legislation or primarily through legislation, the city has to be, have the authority to act. Um, and in this case, as the mayor stated, insurance companies are regulated at the state level. So in terms of the authority from our standpoint of to enact some sort of legislation to direct those communications, um, that, that, there, there's a question there. Um, and then to Kathy's point too, of, of this being a, you know, how the insurance company settles the claim with the private individual, that's a, you know, more of a third party dispute. And generally, you know, maybe outside of the city's authority in that regard.
So I guess, I guess my question is how do cities enforce that such as the city of Florissant has that? And they, they enforce it with insurance companies telling them they have to replace it. And I actually lived there at the time and was told the city got involved and told the insurance company, they had to replace and they replaced.
Right. So I, I'm not aware of that regulatory scheme. Um, I will note too, that the city of Darton Prairie is a fourth class city and is authorized under the statutes of the fourth class that apply to fourth class cities. I'm not sure if Florissant may be a charter city, which they have a little bit more authority. But in terms of that, I'm not familiar with that, that regulatory scheme.
Well, I mean, I, I think it'd be worth looking into. See if, if there is anything we can do. I mean, if there isn't, it, there isn't, but I, I, I think we owe it to our residents with them asking us to pursue if there is something, especially with me knowing there is a city that does do it. And like you said, yeah, we may not fall into classification. I, I, I do think we ought to look into it. That's just my point.
Okay. Alright, so does the, does the board want to have the city attorney look into this matter and see if there's any additional impact we could have on this, the subject? Based on Florissant as well as ensuring that, uh, there is no way that this could backfire and then is to the city minister's point, be put as an additional burden on our city without, if it's not enforceable? Or do we want to leave it as is?
I'd like to make that motion.
Uh, when you make, oh, I want to hear your motion because I might want to, uh, express a little bit deeper, but go ahead. I'm going to listen to you first.
Basically what Keith just said, for the attorney to look into it, to see if we have any enforceable means of enforcing this kind of situation. I, I would like to keep it very simple for him to look into it. At this point, to make sure we can do something, then once he does find the information, then I'd love to bring it back for in-depth conversation and research of what we would like to put into something like that.
Can I change, say a little bit differently?
You can say that for everyone.
I would like to make a motion to first do the research to see if we could even get this opportunity to make this, uh, make this situation happen in Darting Prairie by looking at our witnesses, is not witnesses, but looking at our fourth class city classification. And then if we can go forward, does that sound good?
I think that's, that's basically what it said.
Yeah. Just want to make sure I say, because we got this, he told us to say it, but yeah.
Okay.
Am I right, Kim? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just making sure I say it. Okay.
I think generally that the, with an additional details captured, um, Alderman Johnson has the emotion and then seconded by Alderman Wilson. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? The attorney will look into that and come back to the board. All right. So going on to the, the next items, review of the board of aldermen agenda for the evening. Any questions or discussion on the, the board of aldermen meeting agenda for tonight? Unheard? Okay. Well, I want to just, uh, we've got a little bit of time, so I want to just take a quick moment to kind of talk a little bit about the America 250 and uh, some of the things that we're, we're kind of getting into right now. So this is a resolution to, um, you know, in support of Americas, the America 250 movement in St. Charles. And I know that we'd previously talked about um, the city administrator and I had attended, uh, the America 250 kickoff event about a month ago, maybe. Uh, it's hard, three, four weeks ago, somewhere in that ballpark. Um, and it was really great. It was, uh, it was a nice event and it's just trying to get folks in the community and in the cities, you know, and some of the other elected officials and to kind of get their eye on this early because of, you know, to make it a a significant event as it should be as the 250th anniversary of our country. Um, so here we are, we're, we're a year and two days out from it today. Um, and right now the, this Kathy has, Kathy and I have been already in discussion and we're, we're starting to plan some things and we really would, you know, welcome any additional comments or thoughts from the board as we push forward with this, how to make this special. Um, it's something that, uh, we're going to reach out to the community as well, uh, to, to try to partner in this and in some capacities, whether it be in the academic or the business community, uh, to try to make this not just one little event, but just really, you know, make this a big celebration and a big patriotic celebration. Uh, part of America 250 as well is that there's, they encourage folks in the community to get engaged and start to learn about, uh, the history of America and, you know, the history of the 250 years and, um, and so there's some different, um, different events that I think that the actual St. Char, America 250 or St. Charles is going to be putting on uh, as well as different, uh, efforts and initiatives that they'll have through the next year as well. So we'll look forward to kind of supporting that as much as we can. But like I said, in the meantime, to the, to the crowd that's here as well as the board, um, you know, we're, we're definitely interested in hearing any ideas that, that you guys may have and how we can make this, this event special. But, you know, we'll look forward to those continued discussions. So, um, additionally, you know, we've got a couple of other items on the board, you know, the, the agenda. Both are second reading, so I don't think we need to talk more about them, but, uh, but yeah. Uh, any, any other thoughts on the board of aldermen agenda? We've got a short meeting tonight, uh, it looks like. So we're going to have quite a bit of time to give back if nobody has any additional considerations here. None heard? Okay.
No, no.
Go ahead.
It was, hold on, are we staff communication yet? No?
No, well, I was getting ready to move into that direction, but if you, uh, if you want to talk about the board of aldermen agenda, or you want to wait till the board of aldermen? Okay. All right. So we'll go to staff communications now. Uh, city attorney.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, city engineer.
Yes, I have quite a bit. So first off, our new public work supervisor is starting next Monday. His name's Joe Morris. He's a great guy. Uh, if you guys ever see him around, uh, I'll make sure to introduce him to most of you guys. Um, the snow and ice removal RFP is out. It went out, um, on June 16th, bids are due July 11th. I've received some questions so far, not a whole lot of anything else from that. The Town Square Avenue improvements, which is the Mill and Phil out there on, on Town Square. Uh, that construction is a start early August. So everyone be, be aware, be cautious out there. Um, post road phase one preliminary plans are nearing approval. And then we've got the stump road. I don't know if anyone's been out there lately. It's all striped and joint sealed. It's nearing completion. They got a few punchless items, so we're going to wrap that project up fairly soon. And then the if across the school, uh, welding springs, they, Weldon Spring Road Phase One and Bates Road Phase One have all been recommended by the county for funding and that will be, um, decided upon in their July 16th meeting. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Um, on this, on the funding issue as well, uh, this is, we, Barrett Haven Boulevard is something that hasn't hit the radar for a while. Uh, any updates on Barrett Haven Boulevard?
So I know, uh, last I heard from our transition meeting from the White Sign Group is that was reclassified. So now that is a city street and we can, we can, we can now apply for funding for that. We haven't applied yet. But, uh, we will.
Okay. Yeah. It was reclassified probably a year ago. I thought it was already getting, uh, admitted. I thought there was already grant, a grant that was being applied for, but that's fine. We can.
Yeah.
It's not, if it's not done, it's not done. But yeah, I thought that it was reclassified. Yeah. What, when was it? Alderman Johnson, about a year and a half ago, a year ago? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um, yeah. Well, we can, we'll definitely bring that up again soon and try to figure out the way forward with it. I know that I've, I personally heard a lot from, uh, residents on that road and it is not in good shape and hasn't been for a while. So that's why we,
Yeah.
why we're doing all that. So we'll look forward to hearing more on that. So.
On the radar for sure.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about, uh, snow removal? Um, are we looking, or do you have like a, does anybody have like a mind frame of what we're trying to do? Are we looking to do Darting Prairie by itself? Are we looking to team up with other cities like Cottleville and Weldon Springs? Is there like a plan in place for that?
We're moving to try to do it by ourselves. We're, we're hoping to be able to do it by ourselves.
Okay.
So.
All right. Is there a better, well, let me ask you one more question. Sorry. Has anybody even came in conversation with us even trying to team up to do it together?
No.
No.
Any other, no other municipalities.
Well, Weldon Springs is still going to have the county do theirs.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. I think Flint Hill, Cottleville. Was it New Mel, yeah, well, there's, there's a few different ones, but I know. I think Flint Hill, I talked to their mayor and I think they're doing their own as well, but they, they were one of the other cities that was rolling from the county, but I think everybody's going their own way for now. So.
One of the concerns, if I could add, could be in prioritizing Darton Prairie. So our thought was by seeking third party services ourselves, we would have better control over prioritizing Darton Prairie streets over other communities.
Kathy, thank you very much for that help aside. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Uh, city administrator.
Yes, thank you. Um, we've had a good response to the posting for the IT manager and the executive assistant deputy city clerk. We wasted no time in getting those out. Um, and we have some first round interviews scheduled as early as next week. The first summer concert was Friday, June 20th. It was well attended despite the extremely hot temperatures. I do want to give a shout out to staff that were there to work that event. It, it was very warm that evening. The next concert is Friday, July 18th. Uh, the Well Hungarians will play. That's at 6:30 and again, that is a free community event. Bingo is Friday, July 11th, and you do need to register for that. And I wanted to point out a couple of new, um, Darton Prairie businesses that have, that have recently opened. So the Quarter Butcher, it's located in the retail space near Emo's and Twisted Sugar as part of the prairie development. Um, Beans and Brew Coffee House has opened and they're at the corner of Brian and 364. And then Cloud Nine Massage, um, has also opened in there in the Darton Prairie Plaza off Brian Road. And one final update, City Hall is closed Friday in observance of the Fourth of July holiday. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. And, uh, what's the Town Square Sugar Shack? Is that the other one?
Yes.
Town Square Sugar Shack also just opened last Thursday.
Thank you.
Starbucks more, but yeah, we've got a ton of businesses. It's, it's really great to see that. And, uh, thanks for the update, Kathy. Anything else?
Nothing.
Awesome.
That's true.
Um, okay. Uh, Alderman.
I do have a question. Um, this is a good time for this question. So I have a question regarding the right where the bridge is on Town Square Avenue, right in front of First Bank. Um, there's a bunch of weeds going up the bridge and it does get clean sometime in the world. I don't know when, but the weeds are like crazy right now. So if an individual is going up the bridge or coming back down, riding a bike or walking, you're going to get flooded with weeds. So is that something that we do or who does that?
Uh, city engineer?
Yeah, that is, that is a MoDOT, uh, area. I mean, we, we could potentially, I mean, I don't know if that's actually county maintenance right there, but the, the bridge is MoDots. But we are doing our paving project up, up to there and during construction, the contractor has to mow and take care of weeds. So I can have it in August to be taken care of by the contractor.
Well.
You can borrow my weed eater.
No, no, no. It's to that point. I think we need to do something. No, no, no. It's to that point, I think we need to do something, because it's, it's not, it's not giving me Darden Prairie vibes right now. So I want to make sure, at least.
How much area is it you're talking about?
It's a good, it's a good chunk of the bridge going up the bridge. So once we leave here, you'll see what I'm talking about. And it's, it's very bad. And I don't like seeing it. And I know that I can't technically go do it. But I wanted to ask before we proceed. Okay.
I think this is a challenge we've just, that's been discussed at the board level in the past with regard to these MODOT right-ofways, that they don't mow at a schedule and an expectation that we have and that our citizens have. And I think that's, it's, there's concerns, obviously, with us mowing MODOTS right-ofway. And I don't know if anybody can share any historical conversation on this.
Can I ask a question, Kathy? I don't know if it's a right-ofway or this, because it's the actual bridge. So it's not something they probably will mow? I don't know. You guys follow what I'm saying? It's the.
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand.
So I'm not disagreeing, Kathy. I just don't know what's.
It's like a bunch of weeds thrown up through the fence and on the barrier wall. And yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Matt, do you want to look at that?
Yeah, I'll still take a look into it.
Take a look, and then we'll bring it back up.
Yeah.
Like I said, worst-case scenario, we can, if the fog is, we can take care of it until we find a further solution.
You can also talk to Arnie. Arnie is my MODOT guy. If I need end mode, call Arnie, because it'll get mode.
Do you have a 1-800 number yet?
1-800, Arnie.
Go ahead. My last question, or it's actually a comment. My residents in Inverness, we always talked about people cutting through Inverness to get to Fizey Road through Bryan Road. And I hate to say it, I saw it twice, just by me just driving my golf cart up the, up and down, going back to Starbucks in like one sitting. And surprisingly, no Inverness people are here. But it's, I could see it probably could be a problem. I don't know what we can do for the future, but it's just something I want to make sure we bring on the table and talk about. No cut-through or something like that. I don't know what we can do, because people can do it anyway, even if it signs up. Just a conversation piece, because I know Inverness community has talked to me about it multiple times. And this is the main reason why they didn't want it there. But I saw it myself two times. And like I said, sort of my time. So those are my own two things.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay. Any of the other Aldermen have any additional comments?
About trying to manage that. Thank you, sir. So I'm on board with Ryan as far as, you know, it'd be nice to be able to be a little bit proactive about it, since there already seems to be issues. Thank you.
I just have two things. One, the cones are still, and signs are still on our, in Lewis and Clark leftover from M&amp;H doing the concrete slabs. So they've been sitting on the side of the streets, and the signs are laying in the grass for three weeks now. And so the other day, I finally called M&amp;H and asked the girl that answered the phone to put me in contact with the gentleman that needs to come out and get these picked up. And she promised to pass it on. So I called her back today, and she told me they were going to get them out there to pick them up. But my residents are getting very upset because they have to move these things in order to mow. And, I mean, I just don't understand why it takes them so long to come back and pick up, you know, their stuff. I mean, I would think they would need these things. So whatever you can do with M&amp;H when we do a contract, to make sure that they follow up to pick up their mess and pick up their cones and signs and everything else. They moved them when they opened up the slabs. But they've just been sitting there now for three weeks.
Yeah.
So.
So M&amp;H is actually under contract with the county for that project. So when I reached out to them, they preferred I reach out to the county and have the county contact them. So that's what I've done. And the contact with the county, Tom, actually said that all cones and signs will be picked up prior to this weekend. So if it's not, I can reach out again.
Yeah, well, I bet they don't work on Friday. So. The other issue is, do we know who owns that piece of property in front of the fireworks tent on the outer road 364 there? Anybody? On 360?
North or south?
Outer road. I don't know, going towards Delmar.
I believe it's a Taley property.
The what?
The Taley property.
Okay, well, the weeds are up to my waist. So you can hardly see except the top of the tent from the street because they're that tall. So that needs to be.
I'll get it reported.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I have is, I encourage all the residents and Board net to go out to Sugar Shack. It's on the end of Pub and Grub. It's got great ice cream. My granddaughter just loved it. It was, it got candy in there, too. And it costs you a fortune with dead kids in there with you. But no, it's very good. And today I attended the opening also of the Butcher Shop, which they use all locally beef, raised beef here. And it seems like the guy, the guy that opened that up worked in one in Maplewood. They have an identical one there. And I think it's going to be very well-received here. But, but yeah, it's excellent two locations. And like you said, we have another opening coming up soon for the Beans and Brew. And that's next to the gas station there, Highway Inn.
Is that war, too?
That's what I thought.
Alderman Waters?
I wanted to inquire about, did you have a chance to go by the intersection up there at Weldon Spring and Technology?
I sent the guys out there, and they took some pictures. Has it been mowed?
No.
Has it still?
They put a Band-Aid on the pothole. Just so we all know, that piece of property that joins that intersection on the, what would be the northeast, I guess, part of that, that property has been for sale and is now under contract. I spoke with the real estate agent who represents the seller of that property. I don't know who that, I don't know who the seller is, or the owner technically is. And I inquired with him as to whether someone who owns that property could in fact step up and mow part of the, at least what is close enough to the road that it affects the people that are pulling up to that intersection. And he didn't say yes, didn't say no. He said, I'll, you know, I'll mention it to them. But he says, I'm not sure what I can get them to do, which would be typical as a response. But to this point, it still remains in the same, same condition, and it is still dangerous as an intersection. And then that's, that's O'Fallon. And I know it's not, it's outside of our jurisdiction, but it has an adverse effect on our citizenry who happen to use that same intersection, along with the other O'Fallon people. So I just want to let everybody know that no, no changes occurred, other than the Band-Aid approach to the pothole.
That being said, on that intersection, do we have an update on the stoplight?
Well, the stoplight is no longer part of the equation, because O'Fallon moved away from the stoplight, if you recall, because they instead reverted to the plan where they're going to allow one-way traffic to go in through that four-way intersection. So that.
When is that going to be? Because there's nowhere near doing anything like that. But I believe the county had something, was going to actually do something, the State Highway Department.
Well, the county, the county wasn't, the state of, or the city of O'Fallon was going to have a temporary stoplight installed. And they, they'd asked us to pay for part of it. Following week after that, I believe there was an update to the board. Kathy, did we give that update and send it out?
Can't recall off the top of my head, but I can look back and see.
Well, either way, a couple of weeks back, Kathy had looked into, I'll let her speak to a little more in depth, because she was spearheading the communications with the city administrator in O'Fallon. Once we responded back and offered to pay for a percentage, as the board voted on that night, but we ultimately, they changed their approach on how they were going to resolve it. So instead of resolving it with a light, they were going to revert back to, I guess, they were going to, they had a different approach, which was to allow one-way traffic to go from Weldon Spring Road up to Crusher, I guess. Is it making a left on Crusher? So that's the one-way traffic go from Weldon Spring with a left-on Crusher. But you'd have to come back in through there. But it would, it would kind of eliminate the traffic pileup at Weldon Spring and Technology. They asked us to help with that, but that's part of their project. So I think the answer we gave was, that's not what we were intending to do. Because if they're not going to put a stoplight up in there, and then, and now the timeline they had was, I think, going to be even a little bit faster to fix that. And I don't remember, Kathy, I'll let you speak to the timeline, a little bit more detail if I missed anything.
Spot on with everything you've described. My understanding was they were going to initiate this immediately, and that it would be in place within a week or so. So if that's not what's happening there, we can certainly get back to O'Fallon. I'll, in between the work session and the board meeting, I'll go out to that O'Fallon's website and see if I can get any updates on that project. But that was my understanding, is one of the advantages over the signal was that they could implement it very quickly.
Yep. Alderman Nae, is he still dialing with us?
Yes.
Do you have any comments for the Alderman section for the work session?
No, not really. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. And as far as this goes, the mayor, I'm going to save my comments for the regular session. I do have some comments. Just a little bit of teaser, it's, we're coming on 90 days. I've come on 90 days being a mayor, and I'm going to give some updates in the end of the regular session and my time there to kind of talk about some of the things we've accomplished and what we've done. So I'm excited to share that with everybody, for those of us, for those of folks that are willing to stick around for that. So with that being said, I get a motion to adjourn the regular, adjourn the work session. All in favor?
Aye.
It's being adjourned. We will reconvene at 7 o'clock for all those who are in the audience.